Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll note that Chairman DeBeau is absent. Ken Hartsfield?
Here.
Lee Brown?
Here.
Al Bungy is also absent unless he was able to zoom in. Do you see him? Okay, we'll record him as absent at this time unless he is able. Dave will watch to see if he comes in. Ellen Carrick?
Here.
Carol Harvey?
Here.
And Larry Larson?
Here.
We have a quorum with five members present.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
It's the approval of the minutes. Any comments from the last few minutes? Corrections?
Move to approve. Second.
Second, very good. So you just take a roll?
I sure can. Hartsfield?
Stay.
Since you were absent.
Yes.
Lee Brown?
Yes.
Ellen Carrick?
Yes.
Carol Harvey?
Yes.
And Larry Larson?
Yes.
Minutes pass with a four, one abstention.
Thank you. Public hearings.
Chairman, can I, just before we start, I want to disclose that I received information regarding the deliberations and vote of the Park and Recreation Advisory Board prior to receiving the staff report. I don't believe the information received would materially affect my deliberations this evening.
That's regarding our public hearing for SUB 2021-8 and CUP SPR 2021-04 request for conditional use permit preliminary plat plan approval. So the staff have a report?
We certainly do. Interesting. Dave, do you think? I don't know whether it's, that's my screen or yours. That is bifurcating things. How's that? Yeah. Interesting. This hasn't happened before. The It's PowerPoint, but I'm thinking I could save it as a PDF. Share it. Let me stop sharing for a moment. I apologize. Let me try just saving it as. Save that as a PDF. Go from there. A minute. Try sharing the screen. A little bit better, I think. Okay. So for those members of the public, just to let you know how a public hearing rolls, the staff does a presentation, then the applicant has an opportunity to present. The commission can ask questions at any time, and then there is public comment allowed. After that, and any of you who would like to speak has an opportunity for a public comment. The chair will close the public comment, and then there are any final questions, and then the planning commission will deliberate and share their opinions, and then after that, there will be a motion and a vote. So that's the quick summary of how a public hearing is run for a quasi judicial land use case. And this is the Tamarack Park Town Homes and Apartments. This is the Planning Commission hearing, and the next hearing would be with City Council on December 2nd, Thursday evening. So next slide is a vicinity map, just to put the location. The site is north on Highway 67, not quite two miles north from the intersection of Highway 24 and 67, where the yellow star is located up near the Shining Mountain Golf Course. Next slide is a aerial with the surrounding uses. The subject property is outlined in yellow, in red, and labeled in yellow with Lot 6 and Lot 7. And you can see Highway 67 is to the east of this 12 and a half acres approximately. To the south is the US Post Office and the Woodland Park Police Station. To the west is Colorado Springs Christian School and the Black Hills Energy New Facility and Tamarack Village, Village at Tamarack, which is currently under construction. And I miss saying the Woodland Fitness Facility, and then there's a small office building also tucked in next to this. Tamarack Parkway is an existing road and cul-de-sac, and then across the highway from Highway 67 is a portion of the Reserve at Tamarack and Sunnywood Residential Area. So that is, and I should point out that there is a small portion of the Level Gulch floodplain that just barely cuts the corner of this 12 and a half acres. So one of the conditions for approval is that a flood hazard development permit will be necessary, and that is also a public hearing in the future with the Planning Commission. Next slide is our zoning map, and the subject property is shown here in brown. This is the multifamily urban classification of zoning, which allows up to 20 units per acre. And then surrounding this, just to the west, the Village at Tamarack is zoned multifamily suburban, which is eight, up to eight units per acre. The bright red, I see my legend isn't quite accurate here. The bright red is service, heavy service commercial, light industrial. And that's where the golf course driving range is, the Black Hills property, and the Colorado Springs Christian School, as well as the fitness club, a vacant lot, and the little office area. The parcels in blue are public semi-public land, and that's the post office and the police station. This corner lot on the northwest corner of Tamarack Parkway and Highway 67 is zoned neighborhood commercial. It's mostly encumbered by that floodplain. And then further to the south is service commercial. Then we have planned unit development or PUD with the townhomes duplexes on Long's Point and the golf course. And then there is a residential, suburban residential area to the southwest and to the northeast. So this property was rezoned in early 2000s. 2002, I believe. No, let's see, 2012. Let me make sure I get that date right. It was actually in 2014, so it was after we had established and gone through the comprehensive plan in 2010. And at that time, the, the City Council had adopted a policy of adding 400 high priority units to our buildout. We are, Woodland Park has a finite amount of water, and so we're very conscientious about zoning higher density areas since we want to be, manage our buildout and have that consistent with the water supply and allocations into the future. We are currently about two-thirds built out at, with a population of 8100, and our maximum buildout is 13,600. This property was factored into that buildout scenario at 20 units per acre. They are not proposing to build 20 units per acre. It's a little bit less than 15 units per acre. And here is that 2010 comprehensive plan map. And the pink area here is envisioned as mixed use, which means that it could either have developed as commercial or as residential. So this proposal and the current zoning is consistent with the 2010 comprehensive plan. And here is the site plan, and I'm just going to walk through briefly on this small scale, and then you'll get to see it in a little bit more detail with the northern half of the 12 and a half acres and the southern half. So if I can point out the buildings, first of all, to get you oriented, the, was my pointer, is that Highway 67 is right along this long border of the property, and then Tamarack Parkway comes up on the west side of the development. And in the northern portion, there is one apartment building with 38 units, and this apartment building is a two-story apartment building. Then the larger apartment building is 44 units, and that is three stories, and it's adjacent to the Village at Tamarack. Then there's a third apartment building, a smaller one, but still three stories, and that is going to have 30 units in it. These are fairly small apartments. The developer calls them flats, so, and he can, Jack Bestall is here representing the owner. He will be able to explain that in greater detail to the commissioners. And then there's a series of townhomes. These are five plaques, and they will be referred to as the Meadow Town Homes. And then on the southern side, there are also a number, a series of attached townhomes, and these would be for ownership, and they're called the Knoll Town Homes because there's a little knoll right in this green space here that the townhomes will abut. And then this driveway, which will be a private drive and maintained by the homeowners association and the owners of the apartments. The private drive comes in between the fitness center and the post office, and then loops around and through the townhomes. There's another drive at the end of Tamarack Parkway, and then it also goes north into the parking field for the apartment complex. And then there is actually a third ingress egress that is on this long, little long flag lot. This is also the driveway to the Village at Tamarack. And I was just out there this last week, and they have paved and put in curb and gutter, and it looks really nice. There will be a sidewalk that will be built as part of the Tamarack Village at Tamarack project right along here. So there is another access, and then I also want to point out on this slide, there's a little notation, this is an emergency ingress egress off of Highway 67. And the fire chief was the one who asked for this, and CDOT was very open to allowing for an emergency ingress egress. So that, you know, should Tamarack Parkway ever be blocked or have a problem, then there is a way to exit this area.
Just tell it. I think that's a very good idea, very great idea, actually. For a long time, fire departments have resisted emergency vehicle access. And just to have them open that up, it suggests that tells me that there's kind of a change in attitude, loss a little bit. So that's a very good thing.
And I was very pleased that CDOT said, oh yes, absolutely, as long as they meet the standards for those emergency egresses. So that's the overall site, and now I can show you in a little more detail the northern portion, and here is that emergency access that is circled here in red. There is also a fairly large detention pond on this end of the property, as well as on the south end, there's a smaller detention pond. And the preliminary drainage report has been reviewed, and comments have been submitted back to the design engineer, who is Mike Bramlett with JR Engineering, and no fatal flaws, just a few tweaks in that preliminary drainage report to address particularly some issues that there is some existing water or runoff that comes under the highway in two points, and we want to make sure that that is handled appropriately for this site. You can also see in this area where the green space is planned to have a trail that circumvents or the whole development with little pocket parks, and we'll talk more about that, but the trail is expected to go all the way around the driveways and create a nice walking path. So the Meadow Town Homes, you can see the five plex units there. Here is the southern portion of the development with the Knoll Town Homes, and these range from three plaques to seven plaques, the largest building down here on the corner. And then here is that smaller detention pond on the southwest corner of this area. And you can see the Knoll area is planned to be preserved, the trees and the green space in there, in fact, of the 12 acres, 12 and a half acres, there's at least six acres or more, 50% is undeveloped of the site. Okay. So here's a few photos to give you the idea. Here's that knoll that is where Highway 67 cut between the hill, and this is intended to be preserved and improved as a open space and recreation area. The bottom photo shows, is taken from a little bit further north of the Knoll. So you can see that off to the left here, the terrain is quite buildable, and across the highway, that's the fence, privacy fence to the, the reserve at Tamarack. And then I wanted to show you the photo of the Tamarack and the Highway 67 intersection. There's currently a island, landscape island in Tamarack, and it's quite wide. This right away is, in fact, 70 feet wide for Tamarack Parkway. Because it was originally developed as an industrial park, so they always had anticipated large trucks moving in and out, and you can see the undeveloped corner lot here that's neighborhood commercial. It does, would not allow for a gas station, but would allow for a small coffee shop and convenience store neighborhood kind of use. And then this is a photo taken from the Colorado Springs Christian School driveway looking due east toward the post office and the fitness club. This is a 50-foot wide flag, so there is ample room for the driveway, curb and gutter, stormwater utilities, as well as that walking trail that will come out here to Tamarack Parkway. Next slide is the preliminary plat, and I just circled a few of the areas that when they come in with their final plat, they will carve out the apartment area because that will be one owner, and then they'll carve out tracks for the Meadow Town Homes and the Knoll Town Homes. And then there will be tracks, like tract B will be all the green space, open space. There'll be a separate tract for the driveways and the easements and the utilities so that they can all be managed by the homeowners association and the property owners. The reason I put the dotted red line in here, that's to show the phasing. The applicant has indicated that they would start with the northern end first, and then progress to the southern side, and that makes very good sense because the northern end provides for the loops of water and access, and makes just good sense to begin to do this in two phases. So the Parks and Open Space Plan, the Parks Board, as Commissioner Brown mentioned, have been meeting with the developer, and they are making a recommendation that in lieu of collecting park capital fees, instead, the developer has integrated very nice park facilities and allow these facilities to be open to the public. So these are not going to be private for the apartment complex or the townhomes exclusively. And so it's just like as if it were a public dedicated recreation space, but instead it will be privately owned and privately maintained, so the city would not have the added expense for maintenance and long-term care. So the Parks Board recommended that the Planning Commission and City Council consider this as the dedication for parks in the, as required by new subdivisions, and that the southern side has the largest area of green space, and they plan on including a number of picnic tables and playground areas and gazebo's and exercise fitness area as well, which goes very nicely with the indoor fitness facility as well. And the school right down the street, the kids could also be walked up to here and then use these facilities. So you'll see that request in the conditions of approval that there be a note on the final plat, all plats associated with this, because there will be future townhome plats as well, that these recreation facilities are maintained by the owners and the homeowners association, but open to all of us in the public for use. So it makes it a very open public community. Next slide is the parking analysis, and this is a table that shows our code for apartments require one and a half spaces for a one-bedroom apartment and two spaces for a two-bedroom, and then townhomes are considered like single-family homes, which two spaces per unit is required, so for a total of 293 for the 167 units. The total number of units, 167, and the total parking that is provided is nearly 300 spaces. So that complies with our standards.
Do garages count as parking places?
Oh, we didn't count the garages in this project, but they do have garages, so they actually have additional parking spaces. Because I think for each 55 townhomes, there's a garage for each one. So we have, we have counted garages and others, but we've made sure that they are used for vehicles and not for storage, and, and in that case, we require the covenants to be enforced by that, so. Um, I'm sure you're all interested in what's going to happen on Highway 67. So this, this is a photo looking south, and when the Village at Tamarack was proposed, we discovered, the city discovered that when, in 1995, the city manager had signed an access agreement for Tamarack Parkway that said that when warrants were triggered for improvements to the state highway, that the city was going to be responsible for those. And in fact, in 1999, when the Police Operations Center was And in fact, in nineteen ninety-nine, when the Police Operations Center was built and the post office was built, it triggered those improvements. Needless to say, the improvements were not done. So discovering this a couple of years ago, the city and the villages at Tamarack came to a consensus or an agreement. And that the village at Tamarack would contribute their transportation capital fees. Which for each small unit, it's about six hundred dollars. We contribute those toward these improvements. And then they also paid the city an additional sixty-eight thousand dollars. These improvements on Highway sixty-seven will include a bidirectional left-turn lane from Research, kind of south of here, and then at Tamarack Parkway. So we all know when you've driven this without having a left-turn lane. You turn left onto Research or onto Tamarack Parkway, it stops the traffic. So these drawings is has been designed. The drawings are seventy-five pages of details for this bidirectional turn lane. It also includes a D cell lane coming southbound on Highway sixty-seven into Tamarack Parkway. It does not include a D cell lane at Research. It didn't warrant that yet. But these construction drawings are under review by C dot. And as soon as C dot gives the green light, then the city is going to bid this project out. We intend to build it this summer and it is a one-point-two-million-dollar project. The Tamarack Park, uh, transportation capital fees will also be paid and help offset that cost to the city. And their fees, just doing a rough estimate at build-out, will generate about a hundred and four thousand dollars toward that project. So this is, and I know this is hard to see, and I've blown it up in the next two. But this was in the traffic study that was done by LSC and reviewed by C dot. LSC shows the auxiliary turn lanes and improvements and pavement markings for these improvements between Research and Tamarack Parkway.
Before you leave that Sally.
I'm gonna give you more detail. Okay, um, so this is zooming in on Tamarack Parkway. And first, I'd like to note that there will be a turn lane here going southbound. And that's about three hundred feet long. And then here, south going northbound will be the left-turn lane going into Tamarack Parkway. There is going to be a requirement to modify this island so that there can be both a right turn and a throughway to Sunnywood Lane and a left turn going eastbound on this. And these improvements again are all planned for the summer. And here is the southern portion at Research, very similar configuration. So there will be left turn going on to the county road here to the east. But no, uh, no D cell lane here.
So Sally, so you're saying there will be a left turn at Research and at Tamarack Parkway?
Correct. Yeah. With the taper, you know, here it won't include Valley View Drive yet. But that can be improvements in the future.
Is there a connecting road between Research and Tamarack Parkway? I don't think so.
There is not. At some point in time, what would be really nice is a connecting road behind the Tamarack Business Center. They do have a future phase, so hopefully we can get that in there. And let me say that the traffic generation right now does not warrant a traffic signal at either one of these intersections. But the draft access control plan, at some future date, when Stone Ridge is fully built out. When this entire area is fully built out, there may be more, most likely a traffic signal at Research. This summer, if the bids come in and we're able to make the timing work. But we're on track. And in fact, C dot's had the plans for almost three months now. So we're hoping to get the green light here soon. Uh, this chart is out of the traffic study. This project is projected to generate eleven hundred average daily trips. And that, so that is five hundred and seventy-three trips in and five hundred and seventy-three trips out. It did not trigger any other warrants for improvements like the signal or other improvements beyond what the city is going to do this summer. Now into the design of the buildings. This is the Knoll Town Homes, which is on the south side. Some of them have walkouts in the rear, some walkouts in the back. And Jack Bestel can describe the design. The Meadow Apartments are a little bit different design, which breaks up the community with a variety of styles. They all do meet the city's design standards. The lodge apartment, this is the one that is closest to the highway. And the developer chose to keep them at two stories. So it blends in with the townhomes along the highway. And then three-story large lodge apartments are shown here with quite a bit of articulation and windows and different materials. They are, do have a flat roof that was in order to keep it at thirty feet, which is the maximum height for the multifamily urban zone. And just a quick review of the multifamily urban zone. It's intended to provide for attached residential dwelling units at a higher density than the other residential zones. With a maximum density of twenty, they have not gone that high. They've kept it lower than fifteen units per acre. These areas shall be fully serviced with municipal water sewer and be located in areas that can accommodate projected traffic, pedestrian access, park schools, community centers, and places of employment. And then just through the dimensional standards a little bit here. They have complied with the height maximum of thirty feet. The setbacks are also complied with. And these are the exterior kinds of setbacks, not the, of course, the attached units have zero setbacks. They comply, the frontage forty feet, they actually have like over wow, quite a few, five times three, fifteen hundred feet of Highway sixty-seven frontage. The parking complies with nearly three hundred spaces plus the garages. Fencing and shrubbery, they are proposing to have some nice fencing along Highway sixty-seven. Maybe not continuous and it's not going to be solid fencing, but it's just to protect that public space. So that kids don't run out into the right-of-way or the road, forbid.
Sally, just a quick question. What parts of this property, frontage, what's not frontage and that sideage?
Yeah, frontage is always whatever is adjacent to a public road right-of-way. So their frontage is primarily Highway sixty-seven and then those flags that do front on Tamarack Parkway. Yes. Um, the sidewalk requirement for multifamily, the trail next to Highway sixty-seven meets that requirement for sidewalks. And then they have more than forty percent of landscape and open areas. In fact, it's over, just over fifty percent of pervious surface. So it complies with all those dimensional standards. As far as the preliminary plat, its preparation and drawing and information is all adequate. The design standards in subdivisions have been met with site considerations. The streets, private, private roads, easements, drainage and the lot configuration. As far as the site plan review, and this is all detailed in your staff reports. The city, it meets the intent of the city plans, the zoning regulations. And the building code will be addressed when zoning development permits and building permits are issued. The traffic has been, the traffic study done by LSC is very, very detailed and has been shared with C dot. C dot has no issues with the proposal and the and, and the traffic study. We did have an, an amendment to the traffic study that's on your desk. And it was just to clarify that the southbound right-turn D cell lane is going to be installed as part of the city's project, improvement project. And that eastbound on Tamarack Parkway is going to have a separate right turn. So traffic can get out very easily and not be held up coming eastbound on Tamarack Parkway. People wanting to maybe go north to the golf course. And that the transportation capital fees that are projected to be over a hundred and four thousand dollars will be used toward these improvements. So that was just something that the traffic engineer wasn't quite clued in on until we met and talked about what was in the city's project.
Sally, well, this project will also generate transportation capital fees. Will that be used for the sixty-seven, Highway sixty-seven improvements as well?
That's with the hundred and four thousand.
Oh, I thought that was Tamarack villagers.
No, Tamarack Village, I can't do the math. They'll be paying about six hundred dollars a unit for fifty-three units. And plus the contribution that they made with the agreement with City Council.
Okay.
So these changes have been made in the traffic impact study?
Yes, yes. And I should mention that the city had collected transportation capital fees from the post office, from CSCS, the fitness club, and a tiny bit from Rampart survey. So, you know, all those, this is exactly the purpose of those transportation capital fees is to improve the regional arteries that serve these neighborhoods.
Sally, what are the sidewalk requirements or fees and rules of sidewalk?
Yeah, multifamily projects are required to put in sidewalks. So this project has chosen to do trail system that will satisfy that requirement.
What's the material that trail?
It's gonna be a gravel trail, crusher fines, something that's well-compacted and
Sidewalk would be hard surface.
Concrete.
So how does this provide accessible access?
Crusher fines do meet the threshold for a hard surface, a gravel trail.
So this is a, a trail within the property itself?
Open to the public.
So this, this is part of the arrangement then as well for the parks are in, for the park dedication?
Yes, and meeting the sidewalk requirement.
That, so waves the sidewalk requirement as well as the park fee, park capital fee?
It's, I wouldn't call it waves. It complements or it's a, an alternative.
I, I know we're gonna have an opportunity for questions, but while it's still on my mind and I don't forget it because I have a tendency to do that now at this age. There will be sidewalks around the apartment complexes, will there not?
Oh, yes, yes. From the parking lots and internally.
And those will be concrete.
Yes.
Sally, before I lose a thought.
Yes.
If you have a sketch, just setbacks and like to the west side of Lodge One, there is a property, Lot Four. What's the space, what's the applicable setback and what is the amount?
So let me to the
I should have followed up.
The preliminary plat is.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. As you drive, as you drive in from the cul-de-sac, first time you were building in your left Lodge One.
Okay, right here.
What's the space between that and Lot Four of Tamarack? What's the, what's the required setback and what's the effort to setback there?
Boy, that's, that's a good question. In my opinion, that's going to be a side setback. This lot, their front is going to be out by the cul-de-sac.
That, that was the question, so the frontage on the street there is a, is a fifty, fifty feet wide hitting the cul-de-sac and that becomes a side, the back of the building is a side setback?
Yes.
That probably means that I can't.
Right.
It's not clear in the space either, because, because a side setback is
Fifty, eight feet.
If it's, if side is what applies, then it needs to.
Side, side is what I would classify that as. Okay, so we got through the architecture. And we were talking about the findings. And so we've also, there are no hazards. The utilities and the drainage plans are acceptable. They're limiting any danger and it's got, it's compatible with the surrounding uses. The conditional use standards, we now apply these to multifamily projects, higher density. As far as a need, our community is in need of rental properties and higher-density properties, hopefully more affordable living quarters for folks. The health, public health and welfare is protected. Property values will not be impacted negatively. We believe this is in harmony with the surrounding uses. It's compatible with our comprehensive plan and other city plans, stormwater plans. It's compatible with the city regulations and zoning, traffic, both C dot. The traffic engineer and the city feel confident this works in nicely with the improvements to the highway and the emergency access drainage is meets our criteria, stormwater criteria, water Meets our criteria, stormwater criteria, water sewer and solid waste. Are all accounted for, no hazards. And the architectural design meets the design standards. We've public, provided public notices and referrals, public notice in the newspaper. The adjoining property owners were sent letters, the signs have been posted on the site. For quite some time and has been reviewed by the various utility agencies. And internally, including parks and rec. Should have crossed off the city engineer, we had to farm this out to an engineer to review the drainage. With that, the staff recommends approval, subject to a number of conditions. The first condition is that all future final plats and townhome plats must, whoops. Have that statement. That allows for the general public access and use of the developments, parks, open space, trails and recreation amenities. That a draft of the covenants for the subdivision, including establishing a homeowners association. Is provided to the city. We also, condition number two, prior to the installation of any infrastructure. We require that the final site plan include the fencing. And the details for the open space, location of the gazebo and the playground equipment. This was some feedback that the neighborhood meeting provided. And in fact, in your packet was an email from Todd Wiseman. Who had some very good comments. We also need a final utilities plan with the plan and profiles. For water, stormwater, sanitary sewer. The final grading and erosion control plan. We did receive a preliminary grading and erosion control plan, this will be a final plan. The final street plans and profiles with curb and gutter trails, et cetera. Even though they're private, yeah, we have to have construction drawings to meet the standards. The final drainage report and plan, because they'll be disturbing more than an acre. Of land area, a state stormwater plan is required, management plan. All applicable fees, and that includes the transportation capital fees. And then approval of a flood hazard development permit because of the level goal, little portion of the floodway. And then condition number three is that. Prior to construction of the apartments or even the townhomes. The applicant must request from the multifamily water tap bank. And city council approves these. And so this is to allow the developer to build more than two units a month. Because our tap management plan manages and controls. The number of water taps that are issued every year, unless you're doing a multifamily project. Then you go to city council and they allocate a certain number of taps. For this larger project, they have two years to be able to complete it. Or, and, or it's called perfecting the taps, which means that they're tying into the system. And then there are a possibility for extensions for those multifamily taps.
Couple of things, just, just, why do we ask for draft of the covenants? As opposed to seeing the covenants, do we review them and why would only be a draft if it's going to be changed differently? So what's, I would think at the time we're talking about, you should be pretty well in hand if they're set to go with final plaques.
It's good question. The reason we review a draft is because the final document gets recorded. And so I always call it a draft because I always have some changes for them usually. And what I am looking for in those covenants. Is that they have adequately provided for the maintenance and upkeep of their common areas.
Okay, so actually what we're really talking about is we want to have city approval of covenants prior to recording. It's not that we're looking to see send a draft over.
Yes, right, yeah.
Similar, similar point in item three of these. That there should be a request for the, the request for the multi, multifamily taps. Shouldn't it make sense, there should be approval of the multifamily taps? Why would it just be a request?
I think we could easily change that to approval. Prior to construction, yes, I think that's a good catch.
All right, on both or just?
You're, you're good to put modify those on both.
And, and for the record, to understand tap allocation, multifamily taps. Do they come from a commercial pool of taps or from residential?
They come from the residential.
And what is the max on our residential again?
So right now, we have at least eleven hundred taps left to build out.
And, and I, I should have asked you before the meeting, so you would have the number, how many? Empty lots do we have for residential? The potential for, out of that eleven hundred, if this, this project eats up, you know, a hundred and sixty. More or less.
Yeah. Don't want to misspeak, but I do know that our build out included this project. With even more units, so this is less than it was. Someone do.
From the four hundred, four hundred priority.
Yes.
And our, I, you know, I, I honestly don't recall what was our definition of priority.
In the comprehensive plan, the priority was leaning toward higher density. Multifamily rentals and more affordable.
This is not gonna make a huge impact on the build out or, or, or tap limitations. But we're going to come to that eventually.
We will, and it's probably thirty to fifty years from today.
You think, okay, all right.
Yeah.
And you said it came from the residential.
Yes, so there's a finite amount of taps for residential. Yes.
And the multifamily is approved by city council.
He, he, well, they don't, they don't necessarily approve a commercial tap. And it does get complicated. When we look at the per capita water usage, that includes, so. That includes all the water usage in the entire town. So there is point one, one, seven acre feet of water. That we use for every. Person in the community. And you get to that number by taking the total number acre feet of water that we will have. And we haven't fully developed it, we still have to drill some wells on the Northwell Field. But when we fully develop all of the water that we are adjudicated to draw out of the ground. It will be one thousand four hundred and seventy five acre feet. So if you divide the current usage, the entire usage of all of our water today. I can't tell you how many acre feet that is, but it's about two thirds of that one thousand four hundred and seventy five acre feet. Then you will get point one, one, seven acre feet per person. So that's how we track our water. And it's water that is used for commercial and the commercial use is quite small. Because we only have about two hundred and fifty different commercial businesses or taps. The residential use is like this big compared to the commercial use. And then the public use, like for all the parks and the public buildings is another chunk. And then we also factor in a little bit of a cushion. Because we want to be conservative about how we allocate the water over time.
In our new comprehensive plan, the water section. We have a provision calling for. Awareness plan to begin to think about these days as a community. We can't wait thirty, forty years to get to the end.
Well.
In the meantime, we need, we need to think about all these issues.
It, it does factor into our consideration of this particular application, but my last question about water and I'll let it go. The city is attempting, and I think should be successful in purchasing. The reservoir that the Boy Scout Administration or Boy Scout of America own. Is that water we can access or is that augmentation water?
That will be augmentation water and that's an additional three hundred and fifty acre feet. Of augmentation water and this gets complicated very quickly. Because when the city pumps water out of the ground, we are obligated to put it back into the stream. That is what augmentation water is, when it's consumed. So, and we have to purchase our water from the slope, the continental divide. Twin Lakes is where we have most of our augmentation water. So every time that somebody wants to sell a share of Twin Lakes. We try to purchase that, it's quite expensive, it's about forty five thousand dollars. A share, a share is one acre foot if there's good snowpack. And it produces that acre foot, sometimes it's less. So, and it gets here through the home stake line, which the city has an agreement with Colorado Springs. To be able to deliver that, I think we have, we have over a hundred acre feet. Of augmentation water in Twin Lakes.
Thank you, sir.
And then I've added the last clarification regarding the transportation capital fees. That the city will collect these fees at the current rate at the time of building permits. And they will be used to offset the city's cost in making improvements to Highway sixty seven. In accordance with the access permit that we just signed with the, the new access permit. On Tammerack Parkway. And that the developer is responsible for providing the emergency access. In accordance with C dot's requirements.
Would be possible to tie part, part of that condition to tie the completion of the improvements to sixty seven. Prior to the first certificate of occupancy.
Not tie the city's performance to the development. In, in other words, it's the city's responsibility to make those improvements and these are conditions on the developer.
Okay.
It would be nice if they coincide.
Yeah, it would.
We hope that that will work. So with that, that concludes, thank you for bearing through the long presentation. And you can either ask questions now or come up.
Is any more questions for Sally this time?
I think I have one and, and maybe Sally will not be able to answer it. Will there be dedicated parking in addition to the parking spaces associated with the actual structures? For the public to use the parks? Where will, where will, if people want to use the park spaces, where will they park?
Well, I, this is really more designed as a neighborhood park, not something that we would. Be a destination for someone to come here and park. But there is ample parking on site, there is also on-street parking. Should people drive to this area, I know the fitness club ends up using the street quite a bit. But I, I don't want to overpark sites. And I think we can get carried away with that, just look at how Walmart overparked. And again, this is really to serve the neighborhood. And not be something that people would drive to, to use. Necessarily.
Well, no other questions this time, then we'll ask the applicant or the representative come up and give a presentation or any comments? Get your name and.
My name is Jack Bestall, my company's Bestall Collaborative. I am the owner's rep for Bob Young and Mountain Star. Bob's been involved with the park for. I don't know how long exactly, but quite a long time and, and seeing it's developed. Can you hear me okay? I can't hear my back. So I'm happy to, I have an, I have a presentation that we can tee up. I have to say Sally has covered the universe here. And I don't want to be redundant, I'm happy to go through it. I'm also happy to answer any questions, if you, you know, if they're, if, if it's on top of mind now. However, you'd like to proceed, so I can go through what I have, some of it's. You know, I wouldn't talk and give you redundant information, but I could go through it very quickly if you'd like, it's up to you.
I'd like to hear that presentation.
Okay. Bingo, as a.
Trying to find Jack's present, there it is, okay.
Easily lost, I see.
Yes.
I'm. Let me consist.
You should be able to pull it out.
Yeah, let me just step back so I can see what I'm doing here, okay. Yeah, this is another, another picture of the knoll on, on sixty seven, so it's there on the left, on the. On the west side, it's kind of the character piece that we picked up on when we first looked at this. I think we've been working on this about two years now, go ahead, please. I, I think you've seen enough of the land use and the zoning, but essentially. It's a very compatible fit with the uses that are around it, including the highway. At, at the same time, we're cognizant of some of the issues that occurred with the village. We're cognizant, cognizant of the reserves. Concerns about height and, and impacts along the highway, the view from the road, if you will. So that was part of our thoughts, let's try three. So really from the beginning, we, we really wanted to focus on livability. And it's difficult to conserve natural terrain with the parking requirements. I'd be the first one to make the case that the requirements are too high, not, not just in Woodland Park, but in general. It's something that the nation's kind of coming to grips with now. A lot of utilization rates that we see, not, not on transit, but just in multifamily. You know, are closer to one, you know, one space per unit, for example. And so, you know, we're really in this interesting period of trying to eliminate impervious surface. And, and, you know, carbon footprint and, you know, we go down that whole road. At the same time, meet existing requirements. And so we met it on a, on a equivalent basis. So the buffer, there's a required buffer currently in the plat for lots six and seven of twenty five feet. We increased that to thirty foot, thirty feet in our plan and the closest building is actually thirty one and a half. And that's a side on of a townhome, so I'm not trying to make a big point here and win an election, but. I just wanted to give you that information. The two-story buildings we did place along and do a side on along the highway. You've heard about thirty foot height standard. And then really, it, it is an opportunity with this kind of density to provide more diversified mix of housing. Which leads you to some attainable housing. Which leads you to some attainable housing for sure. Go ahead, please. I'll pick up the pace. You've seen this view before. Thank you, Google. Sketch plan. This is the, the initial plan that I happened to pen. And I would just point out that we had four, uh, you can see it in the north and. We had, uh, one additional townhome and we had one additional, uh, lodge apartment building. We, I was still trying to fit, uh, in this case I had duplexes to the south end, uh, adjacent to Knoll. And more townhomes, but I really saw where they had, where they had worked the railroad and done some excavation in the Knoll. A way to kind of tuck some units up into it and kind of create more of a design of that fits the terrain. As opposed to leveling the Knoll. We've had people approach us and want to make, um. Agreements with us that really wanted to just masquerade the site. And there's no question it's going to change with development, but we just didn't feel that was appropriate. And we didn't make, uh, we didn't make arrangements with those parties. Go ahead. So then, and you've seen this on Tamarack Parkway, you can see the post office on the right and the schools coming up on the left. Go ahead now. And then, um, we have two access points that Sally pointed out. That's the one by the post office and the cul-de-sac. Besides the emergency access, go ahead. Pardon me?
We have three access points.
Well, I have two formal ones, I think. Ones from the cul-de-sac and the others from, by the post office and the, in the fitness. The one that she's, Sally's pointing to now goes to, it's kind of a secondary access emergency.
Shared.
Yeah, shared between. So it's not something we plan to use. I mean, it would be, it would be gated.
So people from the village, if they need to escape, they can go through that.
Yeah, yeah, we hope they don't escape our way, but you know, it's, it's possible.
Once again, that's a great idea.
And then, then, then of course, while we're touching on the EVA on, on the north side that goes to the highway. And that was a meeting that Sally was in. She's trying to give credit to the fire department, which I think is very helpful. But, uh, we've been working with CDOT as a result of that and showed it on our plans. So we've talked to Michelle and Pablo. And, you know, it seems to be on track. So I think that's, that's a good thing.
Just, just a moment there.
Yeah.
The, the four town, townhouse structures at the lower part of that.
Yeah.
Where are their, where are the garage entries? It looks like you've got trees in front of them. Understand it. My, my impression is you, you're parking assuming was he, some, either the garages or parking in front of the garages on the.
Yeah, it's interesting. Yeah, Julio, my landscape architect may have gotten carried away. What, what we're doing here though is on the north side. That the ones that back up into the Knoll, there's actually driveways there. So he may have tried to pay, you know, we have some trees in our landscape plan. That we're trying to target there, but it does look like they're overcoming the parking. And so we would have parking and driveways that access the south side of the north buildings.
And the north side of the south buildings.
Thank you.
Right, okay, I'm just, just.
That's right. So I, you picked up on that. Very, very good. This, yeah, that's the access between the, uh, fitness and the post office. We may have to do a little work on the power line there. So these are the Knoll townhomes and you can see that they're, so they're, like you were getting to, they're either walk up, right? Or they're, or they're walk down and they have, uh. We, we try to fit those into the terrain. God and Sudik are the architects that I work with quite a bit. And, and they put a lot of thought into how these plans work. Okay. And then the south side, um. And, and here it's showing a little bit more, not just showing green in front of those buildings. We haven't, we haven't landed on exactly some of these fitness or, or, um. Playground equipment or, you know, whether that trail system up on the Knoll, Todd, Todd has some good, good ideas about that. I don't disagree. In fact, um, whether he had written his note to us or not, I was going to incorporate that in the plan. But we, we will refine this when we go to final plot. Go ahead, please. I think we talked about much of this. Go ahead. There's the north side entrance. Now this is the, this is Rampart Survey Office Building. So if you go down on the cul-de-sac and make a right guy in their building. There also are surveyors on the project. They keep billing me for travels. It's weird. I don't know. And, um, here we have, so these, these are some of the Meadow Town Homes. And the, and there's, we can have color and, and changes, but we're trying to be kind of. Mountain and earth tones in this first go around on the concepts. Go ahead, please. And then we talked about the, trying to go with just two, two-story along the highway. And so this is, this is the, uh, the apartment lodge building along the highway. I think we've talked about this too. So the fundamentals really were to conform to your zoning and your development standards. We ended up getting about six point one seven acres of privately maintained community parks and open space. And that little trail loop system, which I didn't focus on a lot, I can, is about two-thirds of a mile. We've adapted the site layout to achieve compatible plan fit. And I mentioned the diversified housing mix before. I think that's, is there one more slide? I guess it's just the. Yeah, so.
Next.
Oh, yeah. And then of course December second, City Council, and this is the conditional use criteria that Sally walked through a little bit earlier. So I'm happy to answer questions.
I have a couple of other comments, but I'd rather answer questions first if I can.
Could, could you comment on, well, to be frank, this is an area I'm so, I feel disappointed to see is the. In the apartments, which is very important as part of the affordable housing for our area. The ratio of one bedroom to two bedroom units, such that almost three quarters of the units are one bedroom. These are not large one bedroom. It, it strikes me that with that kind of ratio, the apartments here are not going to be. Available for, for families largely. We're looking at singles, couples, students perhaps. And actually, I think for best I can tell with changes now with people, more people working remotely and such. It may be looking for couples with, want to have two bedroom apartments as well too. It just doesn't seem like this is providing. Affordable housing for families in our community.
Is that the question?
Well, that, that's, that's, that's my observation.
That's your observation.
Question with that. I mean presumably market driven, but what can you help explain that and help me feel? That it makes sense that, that for us to, to give the go-ahead with that kind of ratio.
Well, I don't, I don't know that I can convince you if, because you seem to have already taken a position. So, you know, I, I don't want to be argumentative at all. My, my comment would be that, um, there's a big need for one, one bedroom. And, uh, it may be that we need to flex the mix. You know, this is kind of our concept at this stage. We may want to make an adjustment, but what we're finding are, a, a lot of families, in fact, will work with a one bedroom. And two bedrooms may be too much for them. And we've also tried to go with townhomes to get up into the two and three bedroom range. So it, we, I think we have actually, when you take the townhomes into account and the apartments both. And, and the townhomes were meant to be owner, owner occupied. The blend is pretty close to what you're seeking or what you're thinking is, is a better mix. And it's easier frankly, on the attainable side, to go with the one bedroom and maybe have a small flex room. Or place to work in that unit. But we're still finding our way frankly, in this county and in, in this city. And we may want to make some adjustments. I. I share your concern about attainable housing, uh, even whether it's required or not. And one of the things we've looked at is to set aside a percentage of the multifamily of the apartments. So that they maintain, uh, the standard that the county sets, you know, for rent. I can't remember the name, how the program is called. It's, um, but it's, it's a, they try to tie it into. Uh, and eighty percent or less AMI, uh, so, um, I think that. That's kind of where, where we're going. And it may be that we need to add, uh, and a little more balance to the two. To the two bedroom, but we're kind of comfortable where we are now with the overall project.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's fair comment. I recognize the town, the townhomes are perhaps more oriented towards families, but. They actually, Sally made the comment earlier that, um, attainable rental apartments is, is something that, that. It's, it's a need and it's a need in the city and the places where we have, places there are zones that to provide that are fairly limited.
Yeah. No, and you know, I, I, I take your, your comment to heart. I think, um. One, maybe what's also pushed us in this direction is workforce, which is a little less family. I mean, there can be family. And also student. And we're seeing, we're seeing that, that's kind of the unanswered.
That's what, and that's, that's what I suspected was, was, was the market you're, 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 you're seeing.
Yeah, we, we, we have to look at the market for sure, but that doesn't mean we can't also, and we can't provide attainable. And, you know, so I, I think your point's, you know, it's a good point.
What, what might be attainable rent for a one or two bedroom or have you even gone that far?
Well, even if I had, I wouldn't say it.
Okay.
It, I, you know, I, I know I look pretty young and, uh. But, um, you know, what I've found is when I've tried to quote pricing. It just, it just works against the whole discussion of what, what the plan's about. And what we've learned, I think dramatically in the last ten years is I can't predict recessions. I can't predict economies and pricing and costs. And what the county standard may be for attainable rental. But I think we'd like to follow that. That's why, you know, I, I was glad to see they had that. So I hope you know, I'm not trying to be rude on that, but. It just doesn't work, you know? Today it's three hundred and fifty thousand, tomorrow it's, if I said it's free eighty, everybody, you know? I, and the other part of this, as you know, you've probably, if you've bought any wood lately. You know, it's seventy bucks, uh, four by eight sheet of, 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 of composite. And steel prices are through the roof now. So, you know, it's doing this. So it's just too, it's just hard to give you a real good answer.
I've also heard construction time can be delayed by delivery.
Yeah, we're, it'd be easier if we were building in LA with all the. The, but the, uh, material is offshore. I think, um. Yeah, that's, yeah, it's, it's amazing what's going on right now. It really is. I have a, a couple of really good contractors. And I'm working with them on a couple of different kinds of projects. A storage project. Uh, some flats, literally flats, you know, like four and six story buildings where we use a lot of steel. And it's, it's become a real challenge, but we, we try to work on a pre-construction basis and. What they have learned, for example, on steel, the last quote I got was good for twelve days. And I could lock it in at that price. If the price went down, I still play the same price. So what you're really locking in is deliver, is, is kind of a guaranteed delivery, delivery in four to six months. That's, that's with a particular company that can deliver. So if it goes down, that's on you. You're, you are where you are. So. It's happening. That's the reality.
I do have one more, one more question about the flat roofs. Uh, does it have a weight load, uh, or it will handle?
It'll have to be ninety PSI or, or whatever, you know, up here I would think it's at least that. Um, army? Is it, yeah, we're higher here, aren't we? Yeah, I was giving you Grand County.
It's only forty in regional building apartments zoning.
Yeah, and I was giving you Winter Park. So, and this is higher. So you're right, um, probably right. I, not my, it's not my preference to use flat roofs or even, or even, you know, to use a membrane roof, but. It was also my understanding that, you know, there's a real sensitivity to height in the community. So I, I'm not here to arm wrestle over height. I don't, I think we're here to try to deliver a project and so we went with that kind of a, a design.
We kind of alluded to this a while ago when we talked about parking.
Yeah.
And the number of parking spaces. Do you feel this project is overparked?
I do. But, but I'm, but I'm happy to meet your, I'm happy to comply. Yeah.
And you do, and you do.
And we do.
The addition of the garage units that we talked about.
Yeah, we have. Yeah, and I, and I think, and I think there should be some, some parking spaces for, for the play, playground or, you know. But at the same time, I totally would, would my thought process as a planner, if I can go back and put that hat on. Would, would be very similar to what Sally said. You know, we're over parking every, we, we've learned we're over parking everything. And in this case, it's not, people are not going to say, oh yeah, this is my destination. We're not, it's not a lake. Or it's not something that really you have some fine, fine open spaces. But it will take the pressure off some of these people going to those places. And so that's where the in lieu dedication idea came. Really talking to the parks department because they saw what we were trying to do was an integrated open space recreational program. But we, I think we can provide some, some of the spaces in key spots. I talked to the owner of the fitness and he's thrilled about it. He, he was only concerned about, um. He wanted to be, like, wanted to cut down trees faster because, because they created a shadow and there's ice and it's unsafe. It was, it was, I never thought I'd hear that one, but that was good. And, uh, but he wanted to also have a fence. So, cause so, so some of his little people won't run over and go off his property. So, you know, we're going to work out that interface. Because I think they sometimes go outside there, but it, it's, I think it could be a real compatible neighbor there.
I think the whole idea of, uh. A hybrid park dedication use, public use is very.
You just have to account for the lowest common denominator and who will abuse it, but, um, another question, different subject. Will the apartment complexes have a community, uh, space or a community building?
No.
They'll just be.
They have a community room in each building.
Okay.
It, I mean, it, it doesn't sound like very, yeah, they have a community room.
And they will not have additional parking. It'll just be the, the parking that's already been accounted for.
Right. Yeah, we think. If you had transit here, I'd make the case right away that the latest RTD study that was done in the Front Range. You know, around Denver, not just in Denver, but, but when you had properties on, on transit, which I know is not applicable here. And I, cause I've lived in rural areas too, and I waited for ski buses and everything. So. Uh, but you know, there's literally a market priced multifamily project. The utilization rate for the parking space is point six. So they need about half as many. But it might be that the requirement is still two per unit, you know, or, or if it's a two bedroom or something like that. So I'm not even trying to apply that, but, but I think that just in general, multifamily projects have, uh. And especially if they, if they're more diversified and there are some attainable units, they will have, they'll have less need, you know?
I'd like to ask, are there, uh, going to be barbecue grills assigned to each, uh, building? And so therefore there won't be any private grills or how is that working? Barbecues.
Or, I haven't thought about.
Barbecue grill. You haven't thought about it?
Well, I know we have grills that we've located as a part of the park and trail system. But I didn't think of assigning them to each building. That's why I haven't thought about. What are you thinking? Are you thinking that they should?
Been at apartments in, in Breckenridge Time Shares where there was one that's assigned to the building.
Yeah, so you can go out the back door or whatever. Yeah, that's good. We can do that. That's good.
We're wrestling with short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Would you be willing to put a restriction on your project to limit or eliminate short-term rentals?
What, what, I want to hear all the things that you want first and we'll make a deal. We'll make a blended, we'll make a blended negotiation. I was going to mention too, on HOA covenants, the city does not have authority over those. It's a state law. So when, when, when Sally is marking, doing a markup of a draft that I give her. I'm very tuned in because I think Sally has a lot to bring to the table. But I don't necessarily have to go along with what the city wants on my covenants. That's, that's state law.
You have, you, well, you have to go along with requirements that are built into the conditional use permit. If it's a city approval requirement, then there's a city. If it's a city approval requirement, then there's a city approval required.
No, 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 I'm sorry. You would be breaking state law. The city, if you ask your city attorney, he would say that you don't have the right to approve covenants. It's just, it's just information. But I'm, I'm happy to work with you on covenants. Is that correct? So I mean, that's, that's my understanding of, that's all the covenants I've ever done in the state.
And again, I only look at, look to make sure that the covenants are consistent with the plaque that I'm reviewing. Making sure that when they identify, for example, common open space or common areas, that that is consistent with what's on the.
It's clear which the apartment owner does, what the home homeowners association does.
Right.
And there's perhaps a consumer protection element that the city puts in it by approval to see that it's not unbalanced.
Well, it's really about is the flat that I'm approving because that's my jurisdiction is to approve the plaque. Consistent with what's in the text.
Right. No, it's.
But I can't change what's in the text. For example, something about. Would be a good example. You can't, can't paint, repaint these units a certain color. I want them painted a certain.
Right, or you, or you restrict, you restrict animals, there's no, no dogs allowed or, you know.
That would be way outside.
The city would not have, would not base its review upon that, that sort of consideration.
Right, right. It's just a point of information.
But a consideration for some restriction or prohibition outright prohibition on short term rentals could be considered in covenants, correct?
Yeah, it could, it could be a deed restriction and, and I, I wouldn't want to agree to it. I mean, not because, I fully understand the problem though. I spent 10 years in the mountains where it's a huge problem in the Winter Park Fraser areas where I was. So I totally am sympathetic to that. I don't know that I want to restrict property owners and what they can do with their property.
It's up to the city to establish rules and regulations based on the zoning.
Yeah, and I would, you know, and I'd be glad to participate in a discussion of that.
It's coming.
Yeah, I, I've served a term on the Jefferson County Planning Commission. And we, we structured something because, you know, it was, it was a huge issue. That was 10 years ago, I think. So I, I, yeah.
But I would think that that would be the case with the apartment rentals. Someone could not sublet again, that would.
Yeah, but on the townhomes, I would think, yeah. No, it's a tough issue.
Other questions? Any final comments at this point?
I'll ask more comments or questions.
I'd expect that. Very good. Thank you. We all good to keep moving on? Then let's go ahead and open up the public comments. So. We have people signed up? Okay, first on our list is Sandy Gordon.
First. Sandy Gordon thirteen thirty-two Long's Point.
Thank you.
And first of all, I would like to thank Steph and all of you commissioners for your time and consideration in this project. I did have the opportunity to attend Jack's community meeting. Unfortunately, had a conflict at the same time. There were only eleven of us there. So I do have a couple of questions based upon that meeting as well. The first one is really a clarification for me. I sat on planning for a number of years and was probably known as the tree hugger. So my question to Jack was, is this going to be totally clear cut? This parcel, just like the village of Tamarack has just been done. And if so, I would strongly suggest. That there would be some of the buffer areas at a minimum, especially, and that is the question I'd like to ask. Is that thirty foot buffer along Highway sixty seven going to be somewhat left intact? With the ponderosas and the aspens that are native to that area. Will help not only with security for that area as well as a visual barrier. So that is a clarification that I would like to have. And I don't know who I need to ask that question of.
Well, you've asked a question. Why don't we go through the public hearing and we'll readdress to the applicant and we can probably address some of those questions ourselves.
Okay, that was my first question. Pricing, I certainly understand where Jack's coming from on that one. He did mention at that meeting as well that it would be phase one and then phase two. And I know it's a very, very difficult question to ask of any developer at this point. Come, what kind of a timetable are you looking at? Are you going, and especially if you're doing a lot of cutting, a lot of improvements, you know. How much is going to be done at what timeframe? And I think it was an excellent question that was asked by you about the parking for that little parking area. I do live on Long's Point. There are no, no homes in village of Tamarack yet. But we're already seeing an influx of people on our private street. So I think that needs to be addressed a little bit further. Yes, you can overpark, but remember you're going to have a huge. Influx of numbers of residents. And I don't believe there could be an overparking situation with village of Tamarack so close by. So those are my concerns and thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next we have Elizabeth McQuintock.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth McQuintock. I live at two thirty Iron Eagle Point. My concerns primarily deal with the traffic situation. That will be developing because of the additional traffic from all of the homes that will be built. As indicated, we'll have at least three hundred additional vehicles. That will be attached with the three hundred parking spaces. Sally did address the new turn lanes that will be put in at Tamarack and at Research. But we've had this come up before and these promises have been made before and still nothing has been done. We've been waiting for this for quite some time. I live at, right there at Research. And it, it's just getting worse and worse. And now we're going to put in more homes in that area. I mean, now trying to leave my neighborhood from Research to get onto sixty seven in the mornings during the weekday. There's days that I'm sitting there for 10 minutes to get on to sixty seven. Because the traffic is so extensive and the speeds at which people are, are going on sixty seven. And coming into town are excessive. We're not having much traffic enforcement on sixty seven now and it's a problem. And then at night, trying to turn on to sixty seven, from sixty seven into my neighborhood on Research. The hand gestures. It, it's creative what I get in my rearview mirror. But people are frustrated. I, I know that, I see it. But it's a lot of evenings, I almost get rear ended a lot of times. It's getting to be a dangerous situation. It really is. And something needs to be done. And it really does concern me. When I, when I saw this development being talked about. I, I'm not concerned about additional houses. I, I think it's great. I, I think more people who want to live in Woodland Park is a good thing. I think more people who want to live here. The more people who want to be here and more accessible it is, I, I think that's wonderful. I've been here for quite a long time. I've raised my family here. We've always enjoyed it here. It's a wonderful community. If the more people that can enjoy it, all the better, I think. But we need to do this responsibly and we need to take into account. What is happening to the community and traffic is part of that. And so, and I appreciate Sally's work in putting up. All of the information, but we really do have to pressure C dot to take some responsibility here. And they have to step up and start addressing what's going on here. Because they have a lot of responsibility for that road. And I know the city has a lot of part of this too, but. They end up taking the lead in this. And we have to follow behind them a lot of times. And I know you can only do so much, Sally can only do so much, but I would just like to encourage you to keep pressuring them to do their part. Developers can only do what they can do, I know, but. You know, it just, it gets to be a dangerous situation out there. So that's what I would just like to have everyone keep in mind that with more development, it's more traffic, it's more people. It puts lives in danger. It really does. And I'm one of those people. My children are part of that. And I'm sure all of your families are as well. So let's keep those things in mind.
Can I ask Elizabeth one question? Has, has the light at Kelly Road made any difference?
You know, I honestly think it has somewhat made it worse. I think it has helped probably for people who are taking their kids to school. Because I think it helps them in order to turn, in order to get to school when they're doing the drop offs in the morning. But unfortunately, I think at, in the evenings, it has made it worse because right after the light, as you're coming. As you're going towards Deckers or you're going towards Research and Tamarack. Almost thirty feet right after the light is the speed limit sign. That says the speed limit goes up to fifty right there. And so it almost encourages people. To think that they need to get right up to fifty at that point in time. And they really don't think about the fact that they need to be slowing down for others that have to start turning into their neighborhoods. And almost about three fourths of a mile is when people start having to turn off onto Research and to. We have Sunnywood there, the Movel Gulch and Tamarack almost immediately after those places. And so we start slowing down almost immediately after that, but yet people seem to think. Oh, there's a fifty mile per hour sign, so I need to gun it right after that stopway. It's kind of a very strange. Mental impact that it seems to be having on people that I've, I've witnessed. And so it's just a different sort of mental impact, I think. It's helped in the mornings, I think, for the turning and getting people to school, I think, but otherwise, no. And I think perhaps when we have the police department back up to full force, maybe they'll be able to do some more traffic enforcement on sixty seven again. But right now, I think maybe that's having an impact, but you know, it's been really. Just difficult there. And, but I just wanted to come and let you know about that. But to hear that there were going to be more houses and I know I mentioned this to Sally and I really appreciated all the information she put into the presentation today. It just concerned me greatly to hear about this. And I would just like to encourage you, whatever you can do to put the pressure on C dot. To get that, those turns in there would be really appreciated.
The plans are in the works and I think the improvements should be happening this summer and I think you'll appreciate benefit.
Yeah, thank you.
If you don't see that approval, come put pressure on us when we.
Okay.
City and C dot too.
Yeah, I, I'm honestly, this is kind of becoming a cause of mine because it, it really is an issue. I mean, you have no idea how many times I have been sitting there to turn. And had people come right up on me and then swerve and almost hit the. Bars that are on the side of the road. It's, it's an issue. It's a significant issue. And I expect to be rear ended at any point in time. And we've already had one rear end, rear end accident this year. Where my husband had to have surgery on his wrist because of it. We really don't want to have that happen again. Just, we just don't. Thank you.
It looks like our third speaker or member has crossed off. Anybody else in the public would like to come up and make comment or ask questions?
Check on Zoom two.
Oh, Dave.
Oh, we do have somebody with their hand up.
Thank you. Dave can help us with his connection?
Joe Fury.
Hey, can you hear me?
Sure, you're there.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, Joe Fury five six five Pembroke Drive. I have one comment and one question. I attended the neighborhood meeting and one of my concerns was. Further losing the amenity of night skies here in Wood Park. So I asked. Jack Bestall about what kind of outdoor lighting they're going to have. And I was happy to hear that they are going to use cutoff lighting. That only projects light down towards the ground and not up to the sky. So I just wanted the planning commissioners to know that some of us have this concern and it sounds like. The development's going to address that. So that's my comment. And then. I wanted to just understand better how that emergency egress to sixty seven would be used. Based on what Sally said, it would only be used if the other exits. Through Tamarack Parkway was somehow cut off. My concern is if the whole north end of town got a short notice evacuation notice, say for an approaching fire. I'm hoping this development. The primary exit would be Tamarack Parkway with the new accelerate or merge lane that it will have. As opposed to people bailing directly out to sixty seven and causing a, a bottle, you know, a worse bottleneck. When, where the rest of us might not be able to get by. Anyone answer that?
We'll, we'll answer it.
Thank you, Mr. Fury.
Thank you.
Anyone else out there, Dave? Okay, and nobody here seems to have their hands up. So, oh yes, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Sandy Sussman, Jack Gordon at thirteen thirty-two Long's Point. And I would just like to seriously reinforce what the, this young lady right here stated. Every time that I make the turn into Research Parkway. I have even tried to adjust my speed so that I can get to Research and make a left turn without stopping. I turn the turn signal on before I get to Valley View at the other side. And this, I may help and it may not help because it seems to, like you're saying, to anger the people. We're going to have a serious situation there and I'd like to see something done about it. And I don't know what we can do in the city or what the city can do, but we have a serious situation there with the turn at Research.
Yeah, so the city plan is to put a left turn lane on northbound into Research as well as into Tamarack. So it'll be two left turn lanes, one at each intersection. So I should hopefully.
I hope that works. I'd like.
That's the problem.
I'd like to hear a timeline on it.
Summer twenty twenty-two.
Okay, the other question sent, oh, anyone else wants to speak? I, I don't quite understand how we can call it attainable housing. Which we really need without setting a price on it.
I would concern, but attainable housing is not one of the criteria in the review of this project.
No, but the gentleman said it would meet those requirements.
It's his commitment, not ours.
So we, we have no idea what the price is going to be.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
Well, no other people coming forward will close the public hearing. And I guess we'd ask uh the applicants to come back up, maybe address some of the questions that were raised. What?
Chairman, members of the commission, um the question the question that I heard, I guess, about phasing and uh the trees and clear cutting versus not clear cutting. We did talk about that at the neighborhood meeting. Um I have a particular interest in trying to do what we can to protect the vegetation on the site. This kind of a plan doesn't give us much flexibility. But what I told, what I mentioned at the neighborhood meeting was that I was planning to, when we go to a final grading plan, we've already identified all the trees in a survey. And I'm planning to walk it, flag it, look at it, adapt it, you know, move a parking space, keep a clump of trees, that kind of an onsite effort. The greeting and the drainage, you know, all obviously affect this as well. Along the thirty foot buffer, that's that should pretty much stay the same, you know, we'll run a trail uh there, but it can bob and weave through the vegetation. And um you know, we'll put a protective fence, you know, we're thinking like a forty-two inch split rail or something like that to, you know, to limit people from running out onto the highway and so forth. But um you know, that that area that I think that it was also mentioned uh by Ms. Gordon was, you know, that's manage manageable in terms of being able to protect. The other questions, maybe you could help me with. Oh, I think there was a concern about having parking for parks. I think we've touched on that before. I I mentioned that I could put in several spaces and key places, but I also think we're overparked. You know, I think there's going to be asphalt out there. Uh and I think, again, we want to encourage people by not providing parking. And that's, this is a philosophy comment. Encourage people to walk and use bicycles and alternate means by not providing parking. If they know there's not going to be easy parking, they'll walk there from a from a, you know, typically a mile and a half radius. So that's a quick answer unless you want me to respond further. I really can't address the traffic. I realize it's horrendous. I have some thoughts on signalization prior to warrants, which I've been able to do with C dot before. Maybe we'll talk on the side about that. It's, I don't want to raise expectations, but in in unsafe conditions like this, it seems like there's something that could be done. I did talk to Joe about the night sky. Uh we would use all cutoff fixtures. There's just no reason not to. So that, you know, there's not light going out, it's or spilling off property, and it does help maintain the dark. Other, did you?
There's a question about phasing and time schedule?
Yeah, oh, yeah, time schedule. Soon as we get approved, I, you know, I think it's, I think it's probably a spring twenty twenty-three. Because it'll take us a while to do construction drawings, it'll take us a while to get our, you know, our our construction dialed in. And uh so I think that's when the first breaking ground would occur. And and on that point, it it doesn't mean we're going to grade the entire site. We certainly would work hard on the north end. But I'd like to think if we could do it in in pieces so that, you know, we're not, you know, there's, it's intact. The best thing you could do in terms of erosion control is keep us there. And uh I've done a lot of that site sensitive work and you know, you have to work with your contractor to make sure they get it, they understand it.
Well, how long would, if the C U P is approved by the city council, how long is it good for? Two years.
Okay.
Yeah, two years without an extension.
Yeah, and they just have to have a zoning development permit, which they can get for great. And don't they need the flood hazard?
Yeah, it's weird.
It comes back. Yeah.
For that, down that corner.
Yeah.
Is that? Or I got a question for you too.
Unfortunately, we've closed the public hearings portion, so if you have some questions.
Is it on chat? Yeah, you're seeing this.
There will be another public hearing though, with the city council.
I think it's a very valid concern that I've heard published about the fencing along I'm sixty-seven. I think that fencing along that stretch out would be more of a safety certain without trying to limit people from actually climbing the fence or falling through the fence into the highway for whatever reason. I I think the fencing along there should be constructed in some way. Try to prohibit people from.
So what are you picturing? What's going to prohibit that?
Well.
I mean, I've seen people climb elk fence for God's.
Maybe a taller fence than just split rail.
Yeah.
I know that's probably the most attractive option.
Well, I mean, you know, I, but I'm listening, I'm trying to. I don't know how much more we can protect ourselves from ourselves, excuse me, of us philosophy.
Think about the Centennial Trail on the other side. There is no fencing between the pedestrian way and the highway.
Yeah.
It's not really much of a hazard if people are smart.
But I think uh.
More about deer.
I can't remember. This was emphasized a lot at the neighborhood meeting. You know, I mean, the project all of a sudden was going to be a child killer. I mean, literally, we got into that kind of a deal. And which I really resist at this point. I'm not really interested in those kind of labels. But I think what we can do is put fence in strategic locations, so like you might not have it on the ends of the building, but you have it in where the open space where people might spill out and so forth. But I think we need to look at that carefully, and and that's going to be a part of the final plot effort. You know, I suppose we could do, I mean, C dot usually fences is, I mean, they in in at least a lot of places I go, I see, you you know, especially with deer fence or animal fence, for example. But, yeah, we'll look at it for sure. We don't want to be, you know, creating a nuisance at the same time.
Esthetics.
Well, yeah, or just.
Yeah, balance.
Yeah. Anything else, I'd be happy.
That's it, thank you.
I appreciate the discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
Um Sally, since you had some involvement in the emergency exit, maybe you could ask or address when that would be used? That that is controlled by um emergency personnel? And would only be open at their discretion, so there'd be a chain across it, a lock, that's what I've seen in the past.
Right, so C dot does have certain standards for what the barrier is and who has access to it and who has control. And with the police station just right there, they'll be able to expedite any emergencies fairly quickly. I know when we were evacuated for the Waldo Canyon, my husband and I drove down Kelly's to sixty-seven, and there was a police officer controlling traffic even at that time.
Very good. Um I guess we talk for some discussion, any comments or opinions you'd like to share, come on, the commissioners?
I just a preliminary comment. First, just a reminder, what the standard we're looking for here, it is quoted in the staff report, is that the standard for conditional use permits are intended only as a minimum necessary for the and the key thing is that um let's see, what we're looking for is determine if the application is in the best interest of the city. So the fact that it it's met, you know, how many foot setback and this sort of thing is is not, this is not, is not the touchstone of what we're doing at this. We don't believe it's in the best interest of the city.
Comment on whether it is or is not.
I I have some concern, I I'm, one of the questions, one of the questions I raised had to do with the kind of apartments being relied, it's, you know, one bedroom versus two bedroom. I have some concern that I'm getting too much into developers discretion from what he does from a marketing standpoint, but it also seems like this is a fairly important point. This this development matters to our city, it's important. Um with hundred and what is it, hundred and sixty-seven units? Um are now maybe less, smaller number of persons per household, the reason I suggested, but typically in the city, it's two, three, two, four persons per unit. And developers suggested it's, I was wrong in saying it'd be all single people. You're talking about four hundred people in a city of eight thousand, that means we're adding five percent to our city population in this one spot. And the number of spots where we could do it again are very small. So it 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 matters what we're doing, we need to think about it, and we need to make sure that what's done here is we're doing it right. I don't know of any, some of these thoughts, any traction with anybody else. I have a more general concern, which I guess I'll talk about it, but this this park plan and such too, it bothers me too, but let me not now plays a conversation. Are any of these concerns shared by others?
I can see one bedrooms being needed. However, as you mentioned, that students or people working from home might need a home office as well as a bedroom. And so that's certainly a thought for a little extra space. Although are we all going to smaller homes, smaller, smaller areas? I am not at this point, but uh so there is some concern about that.
Yeah, I I too, we sure that same, same way as in the staff report, looked at the mix of units. At the same time, I thought, well, developer is looking at what is driving the market right now with the market. And they're designing this particular project to meet that market. Who knows what we're talking about? Yeah, but so, yes, it's a concern, but I don't think we have the ability or the right to suggest a different mix.
Well, we have the right, but.
But it it is, is it the commission's place or even the city council's place to dictate dictate to the property owner for an area that is zoned for this use, how to build it? I I don't believe we are. I I do go back to the the point that the two thousand and ten comp plan talked about priority housing and establishing four hundred taps basically for priority housing, and that's why I asked the question, how did we define priority housing? And and I think it's always been what what does the community need, and that was rental properties. Um but when you begin to get into the definition, I mean, there is a HUD definition for what is affordable housing, but again, it's not our place to dictate to a property owner how to use his property as long as it meets these very basic conditions of use. Um your concern about parks, and and I'm curious, because you you did did um engage in that conversation with Parks and Rec. I just hope that the the generosity of this developer doesn't backfire on him and these parks are abused, and they're not going to be maintained by the city. Uh but maybe the, you know, risk versus gain is 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 negligent. Or not, not that important.
Maybe, well, let me let me explain what I was thinking about with parks too. This I've been, I've been thinking about this and reviewing the municipal code as well as such too. My starting point was, what is we existing requirements for this development? One of those is forty percent open space. That's required before you get, not parks, not anything else, forty percent open space. And there may be places to quibble on different numbers, but the the developer indicates that he's got something like fifty percent open space available. And some, all or most of that is proposed now to be be made available for use to the public with some public right to use it. I'm not, I'm not sure how much of that reaches in between buildings and various nooks and crannies. It's kind of an odd sort of park reaching around within somebody's buildings or space between parking lots. So some of that may be a question. But in particular, if there's already requirement for forty percent open space, that comes out to um about five acres, like just like four, nine, five acres or something. And it's something over six that's being talked about as this park space. I don't see how he's got six to give. Almost five was already required to be provided as part of the, as part of the basic development requirements to put in a multifamily housing. So it's just somehow we're double dipping in a sense to take the, Sally's saying, saying no. Well, let me a little further on some of this. The um seventeen point thirty-six point oh eighty of our ordinances says that when the subdivision encompasses floodplains, drainage channels, et cetera, credit will not be given towards parkland dedication for that. So we we've obviously got, we've got a little corner in the flood, a little corner of floodplain, and we've got two larger detention ponds, which I understood is supposed to be part of this. We require, we're prohibited by ordinance from something that is um park dedication land. More broadly, the idea, when I say the developer doesn't have this land to give, um we're keeping it as his open space, I guess, because it remains, retains, remains as titled to the, to the developer or the various homeowners and the homeowner of within the townhouse plots. Seventeen point thirty-six point one sixty says the deeding of land or payment of park capital fees shall be construed to be requisite to the final plat being recorded. That says deeding. Deeding is not saying, gee, there's, you know, a note on the plat saying the public will have a right to come into this place. Deeding means property transfer. That clearly can't happen in maintaining the open space for this developer. So it it seems that the ordinance is really seem to be prescribing this, and maybe I have some work on it, Sally's been, you know, shaking her head at part of this too. To help me, help me understand that I'm, you know, why that, why that's not right.
Lee, you are the letter of the law. We try to look at the spirit of the law and see if there is a benefit to the community as a whole without harming the integrity of the law. But the law is that you either provide recreation or land that can be used for parks and recreation, or you pay parks capital fees. The, in the spirit of the law, we have an opportunity to have parks that are fully developed, not just land, but fully developed, and that they will be maintained by the private sector. Now, if you said, no, we're going to stick to the letter of the law here, then the park dedication would be something like four acres.
Five, four point nine, yeah.
Well, it's based on a certain.
Point, point oh two seven.
Point oh two seventy.
Times a hundred and sixty-eight.
Yeah, units, number of units. And that would just be the land, wouldn't be developed, and we wouldn't have the money to be able to develop it.
Yeah, well.
So.
Well, let me just clear, the the ordinance doesn't say it's sort of, it's a choice in the same way. It says, it says the park fees, park capital fees will be paid, but the city council has the option.
Can accept the land.
According to the the park and recreation advisory board and the planning commission.
Right.
To instead receive land, to acquire amount of land up to point oh two seven.
So let me just remind you, it is the Park Senate Recreation Advisory Board who recommended this action.
Oh, I I understand, and I'm not even focusing primarily on is it, does it seem like a good idea? It seems to me like a prescribed idea.
Well, we don't have any parkland in this portion of the community. The closest parkland owned by the city would be either Meadowwood Park or Crestwood Park. So this also fulfills a need. There is open space and a small parkland across the highway in the reserve, but it's passive park. It's just natural native kinds of areas. And I want to mention about open space. That forty percent open space is probably a misnomer. Because when we, in the layman terms, think about open space, we think about the natural landscape. What that refers to is really the pervy. What that refers to is really the pervious surface. In other words, the undeveloped area with hardscape, with roads, rooftops, parking lots. So the forty percent open space is really the intent to have forty percent of the area that is pervious so that drainage and the land can be replenished with stormwater, rainwater. Um, and there are like four or five different definitions of open space.
Yeah, I think open space includes sidewalks, though, which are, which are, which are impervious. So that if that was what we're trying to do, it wasn't done very well.
Yeah, so it does nuance. There's a lot of nuances in those standards and the law, letter of the law. If you look at it from the letter of law.
Yeah, and another odd result which comes from the proposed proposed park arrangement is ordinarily, there'd be requirement for sidewalks along public streets or payment, payment in lieu thereof if the city didn't want to have a sidewalk. Well, here now, the park dedication requirement is is really swallowing up what would have otherwise been a requirement to put in the sidewalk anyways or pay fees. And that seems to be disappearing.
But from a logical.
Double counting.
From a logical standpoint, would you prefer having a sidewalk along Highway sixty seven? When there is already a trail on the other side and.
I I I got it, but then, so that's, 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 that's put the sidewalk in and sort of kind of decide, but by by you're getting it sort of double count, you're getting credit for what would have been either the installation cost of a sidewalk or a fee in lieu of disappears because it's actually now it's we're also satisfying the park capital requirement.
So Lee, are you suggesting then that there be a fee in lieu of not having a concrete sidewalk meandering through the property?
I it it would be, this this plan is providing in a this sort of quirky sort of additional savings for the developer from what would already be required. As I was suggesting, the land is already required to be satisfied as open space. The and I hadn't thought about it till it was mentioned tonight, which is that now the the sidewalk is also sort of not requi- that would have otherwise been required is not separately required. It's it's being sort of part of the amenity that makes the park acceptance, land acceptance in lieu of park capital fee.
But the gravel sidewalk or trail is is different, though, than sidewalks around the physical buildings, which will be built.
One of that's the case. It may be that this plan, if if one wants to go ahead with it, I say, and it see technically, it seems to me it doesn't work, but there should be a sidewalk in lieu of fee, because no one wants to put the gravel trail inside the fence and then a sidewalk outside next to on the highway. I mean, obviously.
I, yeah, I, you know, I hate for that to come back in some other projects saying, well, you didn't do it for the project on Highway sixty seven. But um, I, you know, personally prefer the gravel trail, knowing that there will be impervious service surfaces around the buildings.
Right.
I think the length of the gravel trail, while not as expensive as a sidewalk, is more than would be along Highway sixty seven total in your feet. And I think uh, the argument, I typically am opposed to fees in lieu of sidewalks. I'd rather see the sidewalk installed than some where down the road, maybe we'll allocate those to some other place. So I'm and support the idea of having, I wanted a sidewalk initially. I think the trail system extending off to Camerac and back along sixty seven gives a more usable trail, gives us something that's usable now. So uh, while it's not meeting the full requirement of a sidewalk, I I I'd support this option to that.
And I think we kind of have to look at this project as being very unique. I mean, there there, it's not a cookie cutter development by any means. It's got a, it's got a site that's heavily impacted by slope vegetation. And what what the developer has tried to do is fit fit the development around that existing thing features, and they've done a good job of that. So I think we just kind of look at it like, okay, it doesn't meet the exact letter of law, strict interpretation, but by the spirit. Look at that, as I would say, uh, and certainly keep in mind that, oh, it's 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 truly a hybrid. You know, that it's a little bit of this, a little bit of that, and you look at the whole thing, it probably fits as a good.
You know, the the playground area bothers me just a little. It it's kind of a public-private mix. I can see the people who are living in these units really becoming protective of those and really not wanting outsiders to come in. Uh, and of course, where are the outsiders going to park, as Carol was uh saying? So I think there's a little bit of a problem there that even if it is public in lieu of the fees, how is the public going to know that they can come in and use these, that these really aren't private? Are there going to be any signs?
It won't take any time at all.
You think it'll not take any time at all?
I don't. Uh, but I I I I do have apprehension about, you know, uh, who's going to enforce, you know, the the use of it and or the abuse of it? Who's going to uh, talk about an HOA? Are they just going to simply call Willam Park Police Department if something happens? Or is the, you know, HOA going to try to take that on themselves? It's private property within the city limits.
I have another sort of thought on this too, is it's it's it seems clear that the consensus will be that one should go ahead, even though they're well, we've discussed the issue on two. If we're going to do this, it at least needs to be done in a way that might see might be more enforceable. And that's what I think suggestions of some of you is making here is what the conditions in the staff recommendation are is that the final site plan show fencing details for open space and final location of gazebo, playground and exercise equipment. Well, it shows final location. It seems to me that what the what we should be doing is if if one wants to take this approach is the ci- the city doesn't want to simply have a site plan that shows the location of a gazebo and saw a playground spot something else. Presumably wants to have, say, some of what they look like, what the equipment is that's in there. This is part of, part of the difficulty, if you're going to have the public private. The city is going to have to, I would think, should insist that it reviews what goes in there as suitable. And that that or equivalent, equivalent facilities are maintained in perpetuity. Because otherwise, you know, when the swing set breaks, if you, well, it it's cheaper just to leave the to not hang the swings there, and now you've got sort of a useless piece of equipment. If 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 we're going to do this, one needs to do it in a way that's enforceable. So at least starting out, it shouldn't just be approved final location, but prove final location specifications of gazebo, playground and exercise equipment consistent with the preliminary plat and approved by the city. That still doesn't pick up, what do you do in the future? But at least you got something to start with. So for a few years, it'll look like something. If somebody wants to explore it, we can talk about ways to other conditions to add that would be forward looking.
That sounds like a reasonable addition to item two A is to um with the final location and specifications.
And then at the end, consistent with a preliminary plat and approved by the city.
Yes.
I'm not saying I agree with it, but I'm saying please at least enforce what you're you.
It should, should it include a maintenance requirement?
It should.
And maintained in perpetuity. That is what the note is going to elaborate. I mean, we haven't actually crafted the note for the final plats, but the intent is to nail down that maintenance requirement as well as the access and um use by the public.
That would be probably one A, a statement that allows general public access and use of developments, park open spaces, recreational amenities, and calls for maintenance of similar equipment in perpetuity.
Yeah.
I guess we had another modification to item three discussed earlier.
Yes.
Approval shall obtain, maybe you could write the owner, developer owner shall obtain delete request multifamily water tap and put approval by the city council.
Sure. Dave, I've got the screen already shared for the last staff recommendation.
Yeah, number four was long. I was only able to write down about half of it when you had it up there.
Okay. Um, so do you want to start with number four? Work our way up or start with number one? So on number one A, this is where we would add um in maintenance in perpetuity and calls for maintenance. And then I have under B, one D, a draft of the covenants for the subdivision shall be reviewed. And I don't know if the word approved is too strong.
I'll, I I take, take it, we can't do that.
No, I. I think we can, we can require approval. You may not be able to, there's things you can't put in, but.
Right, I'm only looking at it from the consistency of the townhome plat and the covenants. Not telling them how many pets they can have.
You could delete a draft of, then leave this text there, the covenants of the subdivision, including establishment of homeowners association. And you might say to fit what you're doing, and documentation of the allocation of responsibilities for common areas between the homeowners association, apartment building owners, and shall have been approved by the city.
Did you write that on?
I was writing quickly here.
Sounded good.
All right, all right. All right, let me start again. Start at number one. Prior to recording of any delete all future final plats or townhome plats, colon. The final plat shall include a statement to allow et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, as you and ending as you just already quoted, and calls for maintenance of similar equipment in perpetuity. B, the covenants of the subdivision, including establishment of homeowners association and documentation for the allocation responsibilities for common areas between the homeowners association and the apartment building owners shall have been approved by the city.
Got it.
Well, it's on tape.
Good job, Lee.
Okay, and then do you have?
Two, two A, I think we may, I think we just got location, the final location and specifications of continue on gazebo, playground, and exit equipment, consistent with the preliminary plat and approved by the city.
Okay.
Three, at the end of the first line, it says devote developer owner shall insert the word obtain, then next delete the word request, multi-family water tap approval by the city council, et cetera, et cetera. Four, yeah. And by the way, and and does everyone agree that by, even though it's provided as satisfying the park capital fee, the trail also satisfies the sidewalk, the sidewalk fee in lieu of?
I do personally. I just hope it doesn't come back to haunt us.
I'm I'm trying to help here too. I I think I think the concept of the park is one that I I I don't think is permissible. I might as, I I think I'm going to be negative, vote negatively on the whole one, just sort of highlight the issue too. If people are comfortable with it, that we can do what they're going to do, but to to highlight, to highlight that point.
Any other comments or special like to have? I guess it's time for motion or someone like propose one?
Well, I'll move to approve um, delete this in, approve um SUB twenty twenty one dash zero eight and CUP SPR twenty twenty one dash zero four, which is a request by Jack Bestall and Mountain Star Investments for conditional use permit preliminary plat and site plan review for Tammerack Park um with um the conditions as recommended by staff and and amended at this meeting.
Second, thank you, Larry. We have a motion and a second. Sally, if you can pull the order.
Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Lee Brown.
No.
Ellen Carrick.
Yes.
Carol Harvey.
Yes.
And Larry Larson.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, this comes to reports, and you again, Sally, let me think.
Just a couple of reminders. We have a workshop uh scheduled for December ninth. We're also going to have some legislative item for the uh family daycare homes, the home daycares. Uh, but a workshop is hopefully going to be scheduled with Andrew Womack Ministries and their vision plan. So as long as we get the vision plan here in the next week, uh, then we'll try to schedule that and invite the public and the city council as well.
Will that be at seven P M?
Seven P M. It is part of the regular meeting. And then I just want to wish our veterans acknowledgement for Veterans Day tomorrow. And we have Larry and Carol, and I'm not sure the others.
I was married to one. You definitely need to be recognized.
Thank you all for their service.
So, yes, thank you for your service and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Can I ask that we consider on the on the agenda for the next meeting a discussion about scope or requirements or things relating to short-term rentals? I think there's a general concept we've talked about in January, but in a workshop, but if there's any, there's any preparation or scope discussions.
The city manager and the staff and the city attorney have also been discussing this. And uh, Logan Simpson is putting together a policy memo, options, very number of options. And so more to come in December, probably a fairly large work session on December sixteenth is our target. With that, I have nothing else.
Any other comments from commission?
Thank you all for your patience with my comments.
Seeing none, the meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Nine thirty one.
Oh, yes.